Oh my gosh, that's next.
It's coming up.
Have a good time.
Thumbs up from three.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you everybody for coming. Oh, Councilmember Harold's online. Are we good? We're good? Council Harold's online, right? Okay, perfect. So we'll call the meeting to order. First, we'll do a pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Atkinson, would you lead us, please?
Sure, let's stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Atkinson. We do have a excuse, Councilmember Navara Gomez, if I could hear a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Navara Gomez.
Second? A motion by Councilmember Rogan Steen and second by Councilmember Hornby to excuse Councilmember Navara Gomez. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Harold?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next thing is a citizens' comment period. It's a provided opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter, including items on the agenda, comments on the public hearing. We don't have any public hearing item. So this is your chance, we just ask you to come to the microphone and you're limited to three minutes and just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Summer Pass. I'm a downtown business owner, state of San Jose. But I've been helping out a lot more time. It's okay, I can still provide. Public comments as a business owner in town?
Anywhere.
Anywhere?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Of course.
What brings me here today is a concern about the closing of Lighthouse Christian Ministries. So I've been working alongside the homeless housing task force for Shiloh and Douglas Counties for the last year and a half, working on a five-year strategic plan that's due to the state at the end of the year. Lighthouse Christian Ministries is one of the community assets that we built this plan around. And I feel that we're really lucky to have people of faith in our community showing up to serve individuals in this way. I've also had a up-close look at how this closure will harm people who access those services and the restrictions that are now placed on social service providers as they are struggling to locate and find individuals because we don't currently have really anything serving as a day shelter now that we don't have Lighthouse Christian Ministries. I've also been thinking a lot about the downstream impacts on organizations such as Link Transit and NCW Libraries and these places where individuals will go once they don't have a place like the lighthouse to be at during the day. And then finally, I wanted to offer a little bit of a personal reflection, which is on the trust that is very hard to build among agencies and entities as we work alongside each other on these long-range strategic plans. And so it did feel a little bit like at the last hour, as we've been working on this plan for a year and a half, that this critical asset was all of a sudden going to be gone. And some of this is just my own not being grounded in everything that's going on behind the scenes. And so things that we're probably building did come as a surprise when maybe they didn't need to have, just because I wasn't in the know. But I wanted to offer also a possible solution, or at least step towards some reconciliation of trust, especially among members of the task force. I've been hired by another city in north-central Washington to convene a meeting of all interested and effective parties around a park where there's a lot of activity of people experiencing homelessness. And the whole town is gathering together to talk about how can this asset both serve these individuals and families and be a safe place for people to, all sorts of people to be during the day. I don't know if there's any opportunity for the conditional use permit to be reinstated. I don't have the logistics behind me to speak to you in this way. I'm in part speaking from the heart. But if there ever were an opportunity to convene a meeting among the businesses that are impacted, I would be so keen to help support that. And we have some of the templates for these conversations in place as I'm working with this other city in north-central Washington. So I wanted to share that generously as someone involved in community engagement, doing this kind of work somewhere else, and would love to share with members of council if you're interested in hosting something similar here. Thank you so much for your time and for your partnership on working on the strategic plan over the last year and a half. Thank you.
Who's, who's next? Anybody online? Anybody else? Come on up, sir.
I'm Rex DeShane, lived here biggest share of my life. I've got a couple of questions. There's been talk about a trail behind EZ's. Out there, you all know that, don't you?
Yeah, this is your opportunity to talk to us. We don't really respond back.
Oh, you don't?
Yes, but we are familiar, yes.
Okay. I don't understand why they're building this or promoting this on private property. It's not city property. The city, as far as I know, does not have access to it. It is not state property. It is private property from Ma- or Maiden Lane down to... What's the other end of that? Pardon?
Walnut.
Walnut, yes. And that's where they're talking about putting a trail behind businesses, behind private businesses. How are people going to get to and from either end of that trail without parking? There's no public parking at either end. How about the business EZ's Drive and been here longer than most of you guys? Probably, if not all of you guys. And hey, somebody's offering him less than the property's worth. You've got a good business there that's paid for, what, 30 years in that location? And then he's been in the valley, again, longer than any of you have been alive. And he doesn't need to be put out without due commentation, and that shouldn't come cheap. If, if they want the property for some reason, they better buy it. You're the governor, or the, what do you call yourself now?
The mayor.
You are still the mayor. I've heard rumors that it's changed, but you don't have the right to go into private property and, and force them out, as far as I'm concerned. I'll, I'll be a big shot in your fanny to keep that from happening.
Okay, thank you for your time. Anybody else? Anybody online? Okay. We'll close the public comments and go to the consent items.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings. Resolution number 2025-28, confirming the mayoral appointment of Kimberly Ogilvy to the position of Director of Human Resources. And resolution number 2025-29, declaring residual dirt surplus and authorize the Director of Public Works Department to sell, transfer, convey, or dispose of residual dirt.
Second? We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Cuevas for City Council to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings. Resolution number 2025-28, confirming the mayoral appointment of Kimberly Ogilvy to the position of Director of Human Resources. And resolution number 2025-29, declaring residual dirt surplus and authorize the Director of the Public Works Department to sell, transfer, convey, or dispose of the residual dirt. Any discussion, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to do a presentation, Our Valley, Our Future. Before you come up, we are going to do at the end, we're going to do a little, little presentation also for our city administrator, but we're going to do that at the end. But who would like to come up, who's coming up for Our Valley, Our Future?
Good evening, council members.
And mayor.
Alan Walker, City of Wenatchee resident and Board Vice President for Our Valley, Our Future, and a founding board member from almost, gosh, almost 11 years ago. So thank you for scheduling time with us today. We also have several other board members here, and I'd like to acknowledge them as well. Lynn Head, Lori Barnett, Becky Fremuth, Kim Hatfield, Bob Boogert, and to my right, Flora Glory as well. Thank you for your time here today. We also have staff here with us. Steve Mahler and Maggie Reicht are both with us as well. Do I control the, am I in control of the? Ah, there we are. I am, okay. So we are here representing Our Valley, Our Future, and we have a deep appreciation for the previous support from the City of Wenatchee. Since 2017, the city has contributed financially to Our Valley, Our Future, and has had prior staff members serve on the board, including Allison Williams, Steve King, and now Flora. We have welcomed city staff on working groups such as the Housing Solutions Group, and we are here to share information with you and request financial support of $30,000 per year for a three-year period. Please note, this is a reduction from the $60,000 per year the city has been doing, so it's a half-price sale, if you will. We also want to share with you that Mayor Crawford from the City of East Wenatchee has included $15,000 in that city's budget. Shiloh Mayor McArdle has included $15,000 in her budget. Leavenworth Mayor Flora has asked Our Valley to request $5,000 from the City of Leavenworth. Shiloh County Commissioners have given $40,000, and we have a request before Douglas County Commissioners coming up. We also have 100% support from all of our board members towards Our Valley, Our Future work as well. There is a list for you of the current board and staff members. We have a new incoming director, Rachel Evey, that'll be joining us October 1st. The board has worked diligently the past year or so to recruit more board members. We have a fairly large board at this time, and we've also successfully recruited several local business owners to our board as well, including Lynn that's here with us this evening. So what's coming up? Well, Our Valley's future's first executive director. We've been under a contract with Steve Mahler for the past several years, and we have now hired our first executive director, Rachel Evey, who you probably know has been the Wenatchee Valley College Foundation Executive Director the past seven years. Our Valley, our staff volunteers do extensive outreach and work in interviewing 50-plus stakeholders, online and print surveys, and more than 20 listening sessions in multiple towns and communities as we compile each action plan. Analysis of other existing plans, formation and meeting of six committees that analyze the data and develop projects and programs for the action plan and the recruitment of organizations, both private, nonprofit, and public, to champion the action items. All to listen to and develop plans for the people who live here and what they want. This process is the voice of the people who call this place home and want to create a solid future for the next generation. So what else is coming up? While the success of the action items are driven by lead partners, Our Valley's added support helps ensure projects develop momentum and traction and align with community's shared vision. Personally, for community action, this has resulted in the development of a new commercial kitchen, an item that came through the action plan on the, on the current action plan. We're addressing a community need to build a commercial kitchen, a full-size, fully-supported kitchen with walk-in cooler and freezer units and available to our community 24/7. This will provide an opportunity for small business development, wellness classes, and educational cooking courses. Success from the action plan. The City of Wenatchee has been a partner since our inception. Our Valley, Our Future started out as Our Valley, What's Next in 2014, led by a group of community leaders following a TEDx conference in Wenatchee and the launch of the America's Best Communities competition by Frontier Communications. At the time, the region was facing several big challenges, some of which you may recall, including the impending closure of the Alacoa Plant, wildfires, a housing crisis, certainly not, low educational attainment rates, and a cultural divide, among other issues. In the current action plan, the city has recognized partner on 17 projects, thank you very much, playing a key role in moving items forward. Many are supported with state and federal dollars by elected officials who appreciate and recognize the work OVOF brings together information and vision from community leaders. The City of Wenatchee projects include, but not includes, but not all of them, the riverfront development, Wenatchee Downtown revitalization, regional planning, completion of the Apple Capital Loop Trail, downtown residential's Latino Business and Cultural District, South Wenatchee improvements, regional collaboration, and more. Thank you for your commitment of time and resources to move our community's vision forward, and you can see the results all around us. While not all those endeavors can be attributed directly to Our Valley, we have established a standard and a practice that others are emulating and that continues to unite people, organizations, and communities at a critical time to create unity and open paths of communication. This work has shed a positive light on the City of Wenatchee and our region as a whole. Other benefits to the City of Wenatchee. The Housing Solutions Group, which arose from the Our Valley Action Plan and has been facilitated by Our Valley since 2018, has conducted two regional housing surveys, published two reports with ways to add more housing, and held three regional housing summits. It is now working on a middle housing resource directory to assist in the development of more infill housing. The City of Wenatchee Community Development Department, a key participant in the Housing Solutions Group since its start, has utilized the group's data in its own planning work. The Post-Carbon Economy Initiative is another example of the City of Wenatchee involvement in the use of the Our Valley Action Plan. Our Valley's community outreach work is conducted at a level that I know no other organization can do on their own. I have tried, and I have failed, but the resources and volunteer power of Our Valley make this work possible. The action plan provides that proof, as it is a community-inspired and generated, creating an opportunity for people to be heard. The action plan helps attract people to visit, move to, accept jobs, and invest in our region. I was just looking out at the platform crane, first one I've ever seen in Our Valley. Rachel Evey has decided to move to Wenatchee after reading the Our Valley, Our Future action plan. She moved from California after reading that plan. Thank you for your time, your longstanding valuable support. To make this a place where people feel heard, ideas lead to actions, and actions generate results. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Well, it sounds like you guys are busy.
Very much so.
Which is good. Half-price sale. So you know, right now, it's in the preliminary budget. I will, if that stays based on the finance committee and comes forward to our budget, I will ask that it's only one year, and then I would ask for update the following year. And I think that's the appropriate way of doing our funding out, so that's what I'll be looking at. But it's, it's in there as of right now.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
What other questions can you give, Alan? I like the idea of you tried and failed. I like. It says I've known you for a little while.
You have, yes.
Busy, busy. Well, thank you for the update. I appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks for everybody coming, staff and board members. And, oh, Ruben back there is waving big time.
Oh, Ruben DeAlma back there too, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go to our action items. David?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. And tonight, I've got our Big Horn Ridge Acquisition Project, which is also known as the Lookout Natural Area. So if you see different terms in there, it's the same project, same property, just different names. Tonight, we're asking for the approval of three different action items within the agenda, and we're seeking approval of our, basically our standard project agreement with the land trust that we've used before. The assignment of the option agreement for the purchase of the property and also the actual purchase and sale agreement for the property itself. First of all, since this project's been underway for so long, I want to give you a little bit of background about it. Property is located just to the north of the city, and it's adjacent to the urban growth boundary, and it's the yellow property there on the screen. It's actually located just north of Ome Gardens and provides a connection to other publicly-held properties, which allows for wildlife corridors and trail linkages. There's one primary trail on the property currently with some smaller spur trails, and it's located on the hill above treetops, so if the wind's blowing just right, you get the smell of apples from the trail, which is kind of a nice benefit as well. And then despite what maybe some of the, what some of the pictures showed, there's actually an abundance of wildlife that actually either live on the property or travel through it, as well as a variety of plant material and geology, geologic formations. The acquisition and future improvement of the trail system will help satisfy 23 comprehensive plan goals and objectives from our last two comprehensive plans and also address the level of service deficiencies for both miles of trails and open space deficits. And because this is partially funded through the state, it also helps to satisfy some of the state outdoor recreation comprehensive plan goals and satisfy the activities that the most people do. All right, so because the timeline has been so long that I mentioned, I wanted to tell you a little bit about it. So before 2018, part of the comprehensive plan process, it's been included in our previous comprehensive plan, those six-year plans, and land trust has been working with the property owners since way before that even. March 24th of 2022, we brought the request to council to move ahead with some grant applications to try to acquire this property. Council approved. We applied for the grants, came in third in the state, and so that was awarded. And in 2023, the council accepted the grant for this, for this acquisition. Last couple of years, 2024, 2025, we've been working on the appraisals, review appraisals, Phase One environmental site assessments, cultural resources assessments, to get us kind of where we are right now. And so now we're right at the finish line, so we've got these three items for consideration. The first item is, as I mentioned, the project agreement with the land trust, more or less our standard agreement that we've used for the last 20 years for all the other projects from Saddle Rock to the Foothills North Natural Area and all those in between. The next is the assignment of the purchase and sale agreement. So land trust signed the purchase-sale agreement with the property owners, kind of hold it, get it in place. And now this assignment will move it from the land trust over to us. And then the third one is actually the purchase-sale agreement now between the city and the landowners. A little bit goofy on the timeline, where we have to have the purchase-sale agreement signed before September for grant purposes, but for financing, we won't have the property actually close until next February, and then we have to be done with the grant by June of next year. So this actually wouldn't close until early next year. What's it going to cost? Okay, so we've got a $750,000 grant from the state. Land trust has been diligently out there working, raising $800,000 in donations to provide the grant match. So, you know, can't say enough about the land trust and our partners doing that side of the workforce, because without that, this wouldn't move forward. City would be on the hook for about $40,000 for the property piece, plus some closing cost, a little bit of fencing, and some weed control in next year. And the property itself appraised for about $1.6 million, so that covers the actual property value. So from a return on investment standpoint, the city would be $40,000, a little bit more than that, in for the $1.6 million project. So it's a pretty good investment. With that, all the agreements have been signed by all the other partners, so we have all the property owners have signed it. Land trust has signed their pieces, so we're requesting City Council to approve these so we can move ahead. Got to try to answer any questions you might have. And Hannah from Land Trust is here as well, hiding in the back, so.
With wildlife, the animals, is it, is it safe for the future for us, for hiking? I mean, is there any danger out there for any hikers?
Not any more than any other place. So, you know, you're out there this time of year, watch for rattlesnakes. There are rattlesnakes. Although, when I, the four times I've been out there, I have yet to see one, even though I'm looking for them. There's bighorn sheep that migrate through, and from talking to the neighboring property owner who lives right there, said they're basically domestic at this point. He'll, he'll go out of his house. I told a story earlier where he's got a big glass front door, and the bighorn sheep are eyeballing his front door because they see the reflection, and they were going to headbutt the door, because they headbutt the fire hydrants and everything else up there. So he'll go out and he'll wait, you know, hit pots and pans and wave and yell, and they just look at him, you know, like a family pet would. And then there's deer and, and other animals up there, so. Not any more than, say, the rest of the foothills.
So Dave, winter closures on this property too?
Yeah, closure would be by the end of February.
No, I meant operationally.
Oh, operationally, yeah.
Will it, will it close like Sage Hills?
Yeah, it'd be the same as all of our other properties north of Fifth Street, so same as Kenzie's Landing, those properties. So it's open during, during the regular season, so April 1st through November 30th, and then closes for Habitat in the wintertime. That also helps with trail maintenance and trail erosion and things like that.
Thank you and everybody else that participated, bring this to us for 40, for our share, $40,000. We get to protect our land around us, and I know that's, that's admirable for you and many people in our community to continue that, so thank you. Bring this forward. And now, finish, for the finish line.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve the project agreement and assignment of option agreement with the Shiloh Douglas Land Trust and the purchase and sale agreement with the Ome family for the Big Horn Ridge Project 22-1323.
Second? A motion by Councilmember Atkinson and second by Councilmember Cuevas for City Council to approve the project agreement and assignment of option agreement with the Shiloh Douglas Land Trust and the purchase and sale agreement with the Ome family for the Big Horn Ridge Project 22-1323. Any other comments or discussion?
Just to thank you. I think it's a great project, and I love seeing the community come together and make stuff like this happen. It's just really great. So thank you for all your work on it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, man.
Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brad Posenjack, Finance Director. Next couple of items I've got for you. The first one here is the, it's the second budget amendment to our 2025 budget. As I say just about every time I'm up here with a budget amendment, we are legally required to adopt a, a budget and stay within that budget. As the year goes on, different items come up that were not anticipated 10 months ago when we created this budget. So we do, we bring budget amendments to City Council to authorize so that we can remain under our budget authority. All of these budget amendments that are in your, that are in your council packet have been discussed at Finance Committee in detail, and Finance Committee has supported all of these. So unless you've got any questions? Pass it off to.
Your Honor, I'll recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay.
No questions? Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to adopt ordinance number 2025-10, amending section 5.76.095 of the Wenatchee City Code relating to the business license fee. That's the wrong one. Thanks for stopping me. I see you looking at me. I'm like, what is that? Okay, let's try this again. Are we ready? Brad, tell me next time, please.
You can do both of them at the same time.
Motion for city council to adopt ordinance number 2025-09, amending the 2025 budget as adopted by ordinance number 2024-28, and amend by ordinance number 2025-03 to revoke, recall, or decrease all or a portion of total appropriations provided, and entering findings that this ordinance is in the best interest of the city.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Uer, and second by Councilmember Atkinson, for city council adopt ordinance number 2025-09, amending the 2025 budget as adopted by ordinance number 2024-28, and amended by ordinance number 2025-03 to revoke, recall, or decrease all or portion of the total appropriations provided, and entering findings that this ordinance is in the best interest of the city. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is a ordinance to update some of our city code language. Several years ago, the state required that any city that requires a fee for business licenses had to adopt standard, standard ordinance language for the administration of business licenses. And that is because now all of our business license applications and renewals go through the Department of Revenue. So you get all your business licenses in one place, your state business license and each city business licenses. Some, some businesses have to have multiple business licenses for the different cities they operate in. And so we adopted that, things have been just fine for the last several years. And now we just became aware of a new revision to this that we need to amend our, our city code for. There is an exemption in our business licenses that if you are a business that earns less than 2,000 per year, you still have to get a business license, but you don't have to pay for it, there's no fee for it. The state is requiring that that minimum 2,000 be increased to 4,000, and then there will be a inflationary CPI factor, I believe it's every four years after that. And so it will have a minimal impact on our business license revenue, but we just have to adopt it because the state says we have to adopt this change.
The history of it is a state, is a state law that, it's not like we have a choice, we, we were mandated.
If, if we have a choice, if we didn't want to change that, we could not charge a fee for business licenses. So we don't have to adopt it, but we can no longer charge fees for business licenses.
Thank you.
I've already done it once, so you can.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
Okay, pretty straightforward. Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to adopt ordinance number 2025-10, amending section 5.76.095 of the Wenatchee City Code relating to business license fee exemptions.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ossian, and second by Councilmember Atkinson, for city council to adopt ordinance number 2025-10, amending section 5.76.095 of the Wenatchee City Code relating to business license fees exemptions. Any comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
It's kind of a fun one, I think.
Good evening, city council. I have the next couple of items, then a little, get a little break, and then I'll have Tom, and then I'll finish up with the last item. So Laura Gloria, City Administrator, the item before you is Resolution Number 2025-30, delegating authority to council members Atkinson, Navarro Gomez, and Cuevas to confirm the initial members of the Wenatchee Junior City Council. So a couple of weeks ago, you all approved the code for the Wenatchee Junior City Council, which requires that they meet the first Thursday of each month. We had kind of a, a date challenge with the applications closing on September 30th, and then the meeting being October 2nd. And so this committee, if approved, that was created, was to make those initial appointments, since there won't be, really be a council meeting before then, and to make sure that the meeting can, the junior city council meeting can proceed as, as proposed. So once that initial appointment is done, the, the committee will actually be dissolved after October 9th. So again, it was just to get us through this initial part. And we had to do it through resolution because the code is in the Wenatchee City Code as, as is. So happy to answer any questions, but it's pretty much straightforward.
Your Honor, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-30, delegating authority to Councilmember Charlie Atkinson, Maria Navarro Gomez, and Jose Cuevas to confirm the initial members of the city Wenatchee Junior City Council.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Hornby, and second by Councilmember Uer, for city council to adopt Resolution Number 2025-30, delegating authority to Councilmembers Atkinson, Navarro Gomez, and Cuevas to confirm the initial members of the Wenatchee Junior City Council. Any discussion or comments?
Excited to see this happen.
I am too.
Yeah, we have nine applications in, unless there's more that I haven't seen, but I think we have nine. And yeah, this just gives us some flexibility to maybe have that first meeting when it's scheduled, or to do a special meeting, but yeah, just for the first time, this will help us out to do this, so.
How many council members are you picking out of the nine?
We're gonna have seven council members and two alternates.
And two alternates, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All right, the next item is the services agreement with Loadstar Strategic LLC for lobbying services. So about two weeks ago, you all had a presentation from Blake Baldwin with Loadstar Strategic LLC to do a summary of last year's lobbying efforts, especially related to Confluence Parkway. We are, staff recommending that we extend those services through 2026. We still have money in the state budget, $35 million actually, that we need to continue to advocate and protect for the project, as well as Public Services Committee weighed in on a couple of different other priorities that Blake can help us push forward and advocate for at the state level. So we've had really good progress and traction through Loadstar and through Blake's representation and support. And so this would extend their contract for an additional year through 2026 for those efforts. Happy to answer any questions?
No questions from me. Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve the contract with Loadstar Strategic LLC and authorize the city administrator's signature.
Second.
I think it's gonna.
Correction on that?
A public works director's signature?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Got it.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Uer, and second by Councilmember Atkinson, for city council to approve the contract with Loadstar Strategic Limited Liability Corporation and authorize public works director's signature. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All righty, keep going through these. Next item on the agenda is the professional services agreement with Elevated Marketing and Events for the annual public Fourth of July fireworks show. So in the past, the city of Wenatchee Parks Department was responsible for putting on this event. Sometime in the early 2000, 2018, the city hired to, transitioned to hiring a contractor. That was Kelly Kennedy through Impact Events, and then she retired in 2023. During that time, staff did reach out to a variety of local groups to see if there was any interest, and so we got some proposals. And Ally's was selected through her company Elevated Marketing and Events. So she ran the event for '24 and '25. And this professional services agreement is recommending that we hire her for the following three years, so '26, '27, '28. You'll notice that the budget is $50,000. I want to note that most of that goes to the fireworks. The fireworks themselves are about 30 grand, and so she does not get that directly. Her service professional fee is about 9,200, which is pretty normal for this type of event. And then the money that, the rest of the money goes to the infrastructure for the event, so bathrooms, security, traffic control, anything outside of that, she fundraises for. So for example, the beer garden, the bands, entertainment, the vendors. She still organizes all that outside on her own through sponsorships and local community support. So the $50,000 really is for the stuff to put on the fireworks themselves. And of course, her fee to organize all of it. So the funding comes from the lodging tax account and is included in the budget pending approval of, of these, this contract for the next three years. Happy to answer any questions on that as well?
So $50,000 a year for three years?
Correct, yes, thank you for that clarification. Yep, and the fireworks have actually stayed pretty, well, I shouldn't say, because then they'll get increased, but, you know, '25, '26, '27 per year, so it is the bulk of the cost.
Well, that's a show that we put on.
What's that?
That's a good show we put on. It's really worth it.
I think it's a good deal. Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve the contract with Elevated Marketing and Events and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ossian, and second by Councilmember Cuevas, for city council to approve the contract with Elevated Marketing and Events and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Tom, you're, you're checking in here.
Mayor Poyer, council members, good evening. Tom Walkholder, Public Works Director, I'm here to present this on behalf of Emma Honeycutt, our Assistant City Engineer. The, the subject of this presentation is around the city's Safe Streets for All Safety Action Plan. This is associated with a FHWA grant, so the city applied for a grant in 2024 and received a $200,000 grant through this program. And what this, what this grant will fund, it'll fund a city's, a planning effort which would identify and prioritize safety improvements throughout the city with the goal of eliminating serious injury and fatality crashes on our roadways. This is an important effort, and it also is also in concert with some other planning efforts that we have moving forward, such as the pedestrian master plan and the local safety plan. So this project, again, funded through FHWA, we, we have a number of expected outcomes. So this, this project, the planning document would take a data-driven approach, so it'll evaluate all crash data, it'll provide updating mapping and GIS data, and we'll be able to overlay this data with census data to ensure that we're equally putting these projects, delivering these projects throughout the city in appropriate manner. And also too, we'll have a priority list and implementation plan. So the objective here is to have a series of near-term solutions, midterm solutions, and long-term solutions to, again, fulfill the goal of eliminating serious injury and fatality crashes. Earlier this year, the city advertised a request for qualifications. We received three firms, Fear and Peers were determined to be the most qualified for this effort through a review of city staff. So at this point, city staff is recommending the mayor negotiate an agreement with Fear and Peers in the amount of $249,913. The project budget was established last year during the 2025 budget process, so we have a $250,000 budget for this, and $200,000 of this project will be covered through the grant. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
This is brought to finance today.
That's great.
Yeah, I think one thing that Emma pointed out was that it's in concert also, well, not really in concert, but it's alongside this Community Safety Action Plan that focuses on behavioral side of things, and this is more infrastructure. So they really do give us a more comprehensive strategy to deal with crashes and collisions and.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Atkinson for mentioning that. So we're actually gonna utilize the community outreach, outreach efforts with this, and we're gonna dovetail in this community, the Community Safety Action Plan that Councilmember Atkinson just mentioned. So we're gonna take advantage of this and, and, and put out both the behavioral aspect and the infrastructure aspect at the same time. And I do want to give a shout out to Councilmember Atkinson for participating on the Community Safety Action Plan efforts, whereas there was a task force put together, and Councilmember Atkinson attended two conferences and represented the city very well, is my understanding, so.
Any other questions?
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to negotiate with Fear and Peers for the Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Safety Action Plan, and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Atkinson, and second by Councilmember Uer, for city council to authorize the mayor to negotiate with Fear and Peers for the Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Safety Action Plan, and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, back for the last action item. The item before you is a contract for legal services for indigent criminal defendants between the city of Wenatchee and Hankins Tibbetts Motte Drescher. So the city of Wenatchee has contracted previously with Cott Camp, Yednik, and Esworthy for these services since 2020. That contract was running out this year, and so the city opted to do a request for proposals. We received one proposal from Hankins, I'm just gonna say Hankins, but Hankins Tibbetts Motte Drescher, which is the contract that is in front of you today. In terms of past services, the, again, the contract with Andy was roughly about $650,000 for 2025, $650,000, yes, annually for 2025. For this contract, we've allocated, and there's a, there's an error in your staff report, closer to a million dollars for this amount. The, the indigent defense standards have changed, and so that's added some additional budget needs as we've discussed in the past. And so that is, that budget has been reflected to try to make those adjustments. Happy to answer any other questions if you have them.
So just one response to our request? And any idea why Cott Camp wasn't, even didn't want to?
I think similar to a lot of the other firms, they simply don't have the capacity, is my understanding. And, you know, the capacity is limited statewide.
Yeah.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve the contract for legal services for indigent criminal defendants between the city of Wenatchee and Hankins Tibbetts Motte Drescher, and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ossian, and second by Councilmember Hornby, for city council to approve the contract for legal services for the indigent criminal defense between the city of Wenatchee and Hankins Tibbetts Motte Drescher, and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. I'm gonna go last, so what have you guys been up to?
You're looking at me first.
I'm looking at Councilmember Cuevas first.
Last week, I attended public safety, and back me up on this one, I can't recall what we did, but what we did was an awesome, awesome meeting.
Yeah, well, I thought what stood out to me was the, can we go back and forth? Was the, the police kind of utilizing and expanding on the flock cameras? I think it's a really good use of technology, just, you know, and, you know, to like, you know, get, get the criminals and it's.
Increases efficiencies, for sure, yeah.
I, I thought it was really cool.
Yep.
And we have a new, new officer with us, lateral officer. I didn't bring the agenda with me, but I was there.
Fire department gave a great update.
Yeah, Chief Rec gave a great update.
Good one.
And that's it.
Well, great.
I feel like there was one more, but we had public services too. Yep, I went to public services, that was great, always loved getting those updates. Public services, public safety, I feel like there's been so much going on, but that's all that's coming to my mind right now.
Yeah.
I'm having a hard time keeping up.
Public services I thought was cool, which we, we did an action on today was the.
Oh, the dirt. Oh, the dirt.
The dirt.
The dirt.
We're not, you know, we're.
Everyone's laughing at us because we're geeking out about dirt, but it was really cool.
For all these big projects and all these city projects to be able to, you know, um, get some of that money back through cleaning and selling dirt. And then also, they also, if anyone has ideas for what to do with the rocks, please let us know.
Rocks for sale.
That's all I had.
Uh, went to Link, uh, ridership stuff. Uh, it's always amazing to me the small amount of complaints that they get for everyday ridership and how many people are riding there. Um, I get more complaints about me than the whole entire Link Transit system on a monthly basis. It's pretty amazing. And they also highlighted one of their own, Jose Cuevas, one of our own, um, in a news article. So, um, well done there, Jose.
Thank you.
Uh, WDA is still just doing the WDA. Um, lots of good stuff coming up with a, a symposium. Um, talking about how to make business smoother transition into our community. So there's a full day coming up here at the end of next month, the day before I go off to Japan.
Uh, I, I attended that traffic safety conference that Tom referenced and, um, proud to be part of a city that cares about, um, reducing fatalities and serious injury accidents and, um, that our engineering team is, um, focused on those things. And there's a behavioral piece to that, uh, that maybe you all get to hear more about and think about modifying our behaviors around speeding and distracted driving. So, yeah.
I've been to a few meetings, but I'm not really going to have a mayor's report. I, I just, um, and I know some of you got to go to some gatherings with our city administrator. And it's actually, uh, five years, I think was in February. So it's emotionally hard and I just want to publicly, um, tell our city administrator, Laura, thank you for, um, guiding me and guiding the city council and guiding the directors and guiding our city to continue a, a great direction. It, it, so there's a certificate here and I just keep on reading it and, and, you know, "For exemplifying exceptional work, ethic and a high degree of integrity displayed every day on the job. And for dedication in serving the citizens of Wenatchee in a cost-effective, efficient manner." Thank you for all your help and, and, uh, you'll be missed. We can adjourn the meeting and I'm hoping Laura will stick around. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Linda.
It's okay. So, um, last night I attended the Board Meeting for Cafe. I just want to say this is an amazing organization. They are doing some amazing work as well. And they're having their annual gala on October third. If council members are available, I'd really love to suggest that you go. This is a great event and it is a fundraiser for them. And due to this, due to the, um, precarious position of a lot of grants this year, it's really important that they, this fundraiser is successful. And then one more thing, uh, November fourth, the Corum River Homeless Task Force will have their, um, meeting and finalizing some, I'm sure we're going to be finalizing some contracts and things at that meeting. That's it.
Sorry, I forgot about you, Councilmember Harold.
It's okay.
Um, I think that's it.
Colonel, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.